Okay, I'd like to call to order the special call meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for December 1st, 2020. Call the roll. Beasley Brown.
Here.
Denning.
Here.
Paragon.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Wilkerson's here. Sorry Nash, I got the wrong. You're supposed to come in front of Sue there. All right, are there any city manager comments this evening?
No, sir.
All right, we'll go to the approval of the minutes of the special call meeting on November 17th, 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. First item is municipal order 2020-184. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Rachel Wright to the position of Inspection Support Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel. You're on muted.
Sorry about that. I thought I was making the noise a while ago. As some of you may know, we had a retirement. Laura Martin retired from NCS just a few months ago. Laura was with us for a good 27, 28 years. Great lady, lots of good service with Laura over the years. We went out to look for her replacement and we got 76 applications. Thirty-nine of those were taken in for an assessment. Thirty completed the assessment. Twenty-four applicants were forwarded for further review. Eleven were selected for interviews and of those 11, we are recommending the appointment of Rachel Wright for the position. Rachel has been working as a communication dispatcher over in the Warren County Sheriff's Office since 2016. And she also is a graduate of Logan County High School and has an associate degree of, associate science degree from KY CTC. So we are recommending Rachel for this position and would appreciate your approval.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next item is municipal order 2020-185. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Ryan Denbow to the position of Laborer II in the Public Works Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
We've had several vacancies pop up over the last several months. Operations. We went out and looked for some replacements. We thought we had four. Three of them didn't quite work out, but we do have one good one here tonight. We're recommending Ryan Denbow for the position of Laborer II. And we had 20 applicants. Thirteen were selected for interview. Four didn't show for the interview, but in the end, we selected Ryan Denbow. He's currently employed with Allied Universal Security as a security guard. Has also worked on a farm in Maine. And also served our country in the Air Force for five years as a heavy equipment operator. So we are happy to get Ryan on board with your approval tonight.
Are there any questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yeah.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-186. Municipal order approving the reappointments of Debbie Peoples and Mike Riggs to the City of Bowling Green. Board of Ethics. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. This is a reappointment. I think they're both in their first terms. They've served very well over the last three years. If there's any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, Mayor. I'd like to thank those two. That's sort of one of those thankless committees a little bit. So we really appreciate their service and what they've, especially over the last several months, it's been an active committee. So appreciate their service. Thank you.
Beasley Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo Commissioner Paragon's thank yous. I think, you know, how much we've asked of them over the last year and how they've gone above and beyond serving our community just really shows how committed they are to our city and really doing that hard work and thankless work, as Commissioner Paragon said. So just thanks to both of them and excited that they're willing to continue to serve.
Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-187. Municipal order approving the reappointments of Mike Jefferson and Jeff Mizel to serve on the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated. Board of Directors and authorizing the submission of reappointments to the Warren County Judge Executive. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon. Again, these are, obviously Jeff is there to look out for the city's interests as well as others. And Mac has served on this board now a couple of terms. It's good to keep, I think, continuity on an item that's coming up so big as we have this evening. So I appreciate your consideration. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-188. Municipal order amending municipal order 2020-163 to rescind the award for a portion of bid number 2021-12 related to Police Department ammunition from Craig's Firearms Supply Incorporated of Knoxville, Tennessee, and to authorize the award to the next lowest bidder Vance Outdoors Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, in the total amount of $49,980.10. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
So when we went to order the 223 practice rifle ammunition from Craig's Firearms Supply, we found out the company was going out of business. So the logical thing was to go to the next bidder down, and that was Vance. And we were recommending to go place that order with them to get this ammunition. Vance Outdoors.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is a first reading of ordinance BG 2020-39. Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2021. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
We recently received word that Marley Boning would be retiring in February. Thirty-three years of service with the city. Thanks to Marley for all of her great work. And after review of this position, Chief Coulson has decided to modify this position. And we're going to take it from a hazardous position to a non-hazardous position. And this person will not be at the scene of any fires going forward. So we are moving it to the general schedule and placing it under job grade 116 as a fire prevention. Hang on, sorry. As a fire community risk reduction and education coordinator. That's a mouthful. Under Schedule G. So that's all in your packets. That's the purpose behind having to do the classification pay. We're moving this position after when Marley retires from a hazardous, from a hazardous position to a non-hazardous position.
Are there any comments or questions about this hazardous or non-hazardous position?
How does that fit on a business card?
Yeah, they've got to get large business cards.
That's going to be a two-liner, looks like.
The FCRREC.
Yes.
That's non-hazardous.
Correct.
Any comments or questions? Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. The next is municipal order 2020-189. Municipal order approving the public transit agency safety plan for the City of Bowling Green Transit Program and authorizing its submission to the Federal Transportation Administration. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
Starting with year 2020, they decided that every transit system needed to have a safety plan. So that's what's before you tonight. I've got Brent Childers here with us along with Stephen, our transit manager. That is correct, right? Brent, correct me. Hello, Stephen. So I'll turn this over to them to answer any detailed questions you might have on it, but it's a requirement from the feds that we have this safety plan.
I can add a few things, but I'll keep it brief, Mayor. This was originally intended to be due June 30th, but because of COVID, FTA extended the deadline out to the end of 2020. So that's why we're bringing it to you all before, for approval tonight to meet that deadline. But this is a new plan. This is not a rewrite. This is a new requirement that FTA put into place a couple of years ago leading up to this point. So without any questions anybody might have, we'll turn our best to answer.
Are there any comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Because we have folks who ride our public transportation watching or maybe watching later, would you mind just giving a brief overview of some of the highlights of the safety, yes, safety plan?
Yeah, the safety plan is what we've named it after the way that the FTA named it. Really what it does is it lays out some responsibilities of different members of the transit program and also sets some goals on how we take, how we look at safety. So obviously, we want to make sure that our transit system remains safe, not only to protect the assets of the transit system, but also to protect the riders. And so we're looking at how do we go about ensuring that our policies and practices are in place to make sure that we have a safe ride for the pedestrians, but also the other people that are on the routes that we're driving around. And so then it also lays out some of the protocols for what happens and some authorities that are in place for us moving forward.
Thank you. And are there practices or just a model of some sort that they recommend for safety protocol locally?
No, we use this from some other standards. Stephen used some other things from RITP Dev that have already been vetted by FTA. So we're using some industry standards in the adoption of this plan. Since it was kind of new, this wasn't a rewrite or a redraft. We wanted to utilize some of the resources by bringing RITP Dev onboard. So we use some of the things from their corporate structure and some of the peers that he has in the industry to kind of help us draft this new plan that fits here at Go BG Transit for the City of Bowling Green.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Nash? Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes.
I do have one thing, Bruce, on that. I'm sorry. Brent, can they find this plan online?
Yes, we're going to post it on our transit website. That's BGKY.org backslash transit. Also want to use this opportunity to make a couple of quick announcements if I can, Mayor. Just today, we launched a new feature on that website in partnership with Move It, M-O-O-V-I-T. So it's a trip planner where a person can go in and put their starting point and their destination, and then it will tell them which route to get on, how to get there, which time the bus comes at those routes. And they can also now use that to purchase their transit passes electronically through Token Transit, which is an app that we have out there in the community for people to do. So these are some of the things we've put in place recently. So all of our information, all of our public documents are posted on BGKY.org backslash transit, which is the city's transit page.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the hard work. All right, we finished with the vote on that. So we'll move on to municipal order 2020-190. Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the US Department for Housing and Urban Development for funding for the mainstream voucher program under the CARES Act. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
This is some good news we received recently. We can get 40 more mainstream vouchers for our housing program. These are mainstream vouchers designated for low-income and non-elderly people with disabilities between ages of 18 and 62. If we can get these 40 in, this would bring our total vouchers to 695. So very excited about getting these additional 40. As you know, we got, I think we got 19 not too long ago and another 30. So this is an additional 40 on top of that. So brings us to 695 housing choice vouchers. And Brent, for that, any questions on this too?
Will this continue beyond the CARES Act funding or?
Yes, this was just authorized by the CARES Act. The funding was already there. But the CARES Act, they used the legislation to authorize this. So this is not limited to just COVID. It was just the authorizing legislation.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Dana?
Just wanted to thank you all for getting these vouchers for our community. And it definitely is timely as we already had a horrible housing crunch before all this happened. And so many of our families are struggling with unemployment and everything. So thank you all for reaching out and finding as many ways as possible, you provide resources for them to be able to have a safe place to live.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions. I'll call the roll.
I think Slim has his hand up, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Slim has his hand up, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Slim. You were down at the bottom.
And muted. Do we have 40 units for these new vouchers? Brent, do we have landlords that we can contact right now and we could start moving people if necessary?
We're always looking for more landlords. So we're always reaching out and trying to find new landlords to partner with our housing program. But also, we're using part of our CARES funding to do the landlord incentive program, which has turned more landlords into Section 8 landlords than what we've had in the past. And that's been the biggest carrot that we've had in the last little bit to really motivate some of the landlords to be part of it. So we feel like we can accommodate these in the local market. We know that we have the demand from the original 30 that we got previously. We've already leased up 26, 27 of those in nine months when we had 18 months to lease those up. So we're well ahead of pace. And so we feel like as we transition into the next 40, we'll be able to lease those up ahead of pace too. So we feel like we have the demand from the population, but we also feel like that we can find the units in the marketplace to support them.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Brent, what are the numbers on our list for people needing or waiting for housing? Where do we stand there and are we moving any? I realize we're going to be moving some, but give us a little background there.
Yes, so our list stays at about 800 to 900. As we pull people off the list and provide vouchers to them, there's new people applying to the list. That's a product of having an open waiting list. So every day, any day that we're open up here, somebody can come in and put their name on the list. So even though we're pulling, you know, 20, 30, 40 at a time, we'll still have that same number. So we usually keep about 800 to 900 on that list at any given time. That number will fluctuate up, fluctuate down, but it usually stays in that 800 to 900 range for any period of time.
Any preference? Is there any preference that moves an individual up on the list?
Yes, sir. There are several different ways an individual can move up the list. So one of the ways is we have preference points established in our administrative plan that lays out kind of what those different categories are. The one that we really try to push out and make sure people take advantage of is a local resident preference. So if you live in the city limits of Bowling Green, then you get to move up the list. So our open list is open, so people can apply from wherever on that list. So we try to really promote the local preference part. We also have a homeless preference part. We have a scholar house preference. We have a, and you can stack those preferences. So if you are, if you're experiencing homelessness and you're a local resident and you get extra points to move up the list even faster. So there's different ways that a person can move up that list. Oh, veterans. Veterans also get moved up the list because we have VASH vouchers, homeless veterans. So we have dedicated vouchers just for homeless veterans to move up the list. So there's a lot of different ways. It just depends on the category and the individual situation of whoever's applying at that time. But the kind of broad one is the local resident preference. And we put that in place a couple of years ago because we started seeing outside individuals applying on our waiting list because many public housing agencies don't have an open waiting list. So word got out that we had one and people started applying. So that's why we made that change because we really wanted to focus our efforts and focus our work to the people that call Bowling Green home year in, year out. And that's where we wanted to really focus our attention. And that change has helped us do that. And so that's the really part of the list that moves a lot. So that 800 to 900, many of that backend 400 is those that, we've got people that are on the list from St. Louis, Missouri. And they're staying out there in that 800 spot because the local part is constantly turning over because we have such a need here in the community and we're trying to address it in many different ways.
You were saying by this type of a list, local people are at the top of the list?
That's correct.
What does the veterans come in there? If the locals at the top, where are the veterans and the homeless there on the list?
Homeless veterans are near the top too. Homeless would put them near the top. All of them have different points. And I can't tell you right off the top of my head which worth one point, which worth three points, and which worth five points. But it's all about the stacking effect. So if you're homeless and were a resident of Bowling Green and then became homeless or experiencing homelessness now, then you would be ahead of a person that's just a local resident. So it's a combination of different factors depending on the situation of the individual.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is the first reading of ordinance BG 2020-40. Ordinance amending agreement related to the City-County Planning Commission. Ordinance authorizing Mayor to execute amended and restated agreement for the establishment of the Joint City-County Planning Commission of Warren County and the Joint City-County Board of Adjustments. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel, did you want to take that or give it straight to Ben?
This is an amendment to planning and zoning. And I'm going to hand it off to Ben Peterson. I'd like to thank him and Hillary for tag team and working on this and let Ben explain to you the changes that are being proposed for voting and funding, all that kind of thing. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor and Commissioner, what you have before you is the agreement that is basically follows the Kentucky statutes informing of the Joint Planning Commission. All six legislative bodies participate in that, Warren County, Bowling Green, and then the four small cities. The change really centers around reflecting more of what the actual population and funding provided by each legislative body. So we've tried to create a fair and balanced proposal based on that data-driven approach, if you will. That's simply just based on the current population and funding. The memo outlines everything in pretty much detail. I'd be happy to go over it. But I think I'll just be quiet and see if there's any questions.
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Ben, if you would, just break it down for us. Tell us what we're looking at here. In relationship to the City of Bowling Green and the other cities and the county of Warren and so on.
Sure. So the easiest way to explain it is we'll still plan together as a community. So all six legislative bodies and their appointees will still be involved in all matters of budget and staffing, the operation of the Planning Commission, the future land use map changes, comprehensive plan, any of our other small area plans we do, as well as zoning text amendments. All 12 members would vote on those. And if you're in the City of Bowling Green or in the unincorporated areas of Warren County, then the four appointees by the City of Bowling Green and the four appointees by the Warren Fiscal Court would be making decisions on things like zone changes or the development plan amendments and individual property applications. If you're in one of the small cities, it would be the four Warren County appointees and that one appointee from that small city. So for a total of five members would be making decisions for their areas.
So did I understand you right? You're going to have an even number of voters on the city and county? You're gonna have an even number of voters on the city and county rezoning?
That is correct. Yes, but we do now. We have twelve members now that vote on everything. And then there's several times a year where we'll have people absent or won't be able to make it to a meeting for whatever reason. So we've had several times where we've had even number of participants.
So when you got an even number and you've got all of them there, you've got four in the four, then what happens? What is the... Does it go back somewhere or go to a court? What happens there on the tie?
So on the ties, it'd be exact same as it is now. If we have twelve, the twelve members, if it ends up six to six, then they have the opportunity to vote again up to thirty days if they choose to. If the tie cannot be broken, then it moves forward to the legislative body with no recommendation. It'll be up to the legislative body to make that decision without a planning commission recommendation.
So what we are doing then, if I understand it right, and correct me if I'm wrong, when it comes to major developments in the city of Bowling Green and the county of Warren, both entities will be the decision-making plus that individual in the county? That individual in the county?
No. So if it's in the city of Bowling Green, it would be the four fiscal court appointees and the four city of Bowling Green appointees for a total of eight.
Okay. Is that it, Joe?
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think Slim had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give you some scenarios, Ben, and you tell me if I'm correct. If there were a zoning issue that were going to take place in Woodburn, four county and Woodburn would be who would vote on that issue?
Yes, sir.
If there were a zoning issue in Bowling Green, it would be the four from Bowling Green and the four from the county, and that is all.
That is correct.
At any time, do the... Sorry. Do the four smaller communities vote at the same time?
Only in the matters of staffing, operations, future land use map changes, comprehensive plan. It would be all twelve, but otherwise, no.
So only administrative are all twelve, but otherwise, they're never gonna vote together?
That is correct.
And what is the justification behind doing that? I read the population and I read and I read funding, but I don't read anything about impact. So I'm open to hearing the justification behind eliminating elected, appointed, I guess they're all appointed, appointed members of our community to weigh in. I just, I don't understand why we're eliminating them if they're part of the puzzle right now. Unless it's because we're unhappy with what they're doing. And if that's the case, then let's just say that.
Oh, the only response I can have to that is the proposal you see before you is reflects what I understand was asked for us to produce.
And who asked you to produce that?
Members of this board as well as Warren County Fiscal Court.
And when you say members of this board, do you mean in a one-on-one situation?
Various. We've discussed this at previous city commission retreats as well. But certainly, I had conversations with the mayor and others.
And at the last city commission retreat, was there a consensus vote to move forward on this issue?
Not that I recall, but that was also a different version than what we currently are seeing as well.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Does anybody have a response to my question of why would we eliminate the four counties, the four smaller cities from voting on issues?
Slim, I would point to the percentage of total population. All of those cities are under one percent of the population. And as far as funding, which is not that big a deal, their funding is out of balance as well. But I think it really comes down to the population and the representation of what's going on in each individual area. We wouldn't want to get involved with Smith Grove or Oakland or Plum Springs or Woodburn or whoever. So I think that was the gist behind this move, to make it more representative of the population. And a city now like Oakland has twenty percent of the vote on an issue in Oakland, whereas before they had one twelfth of a percent influence on a vote. So it improves their representation as well. You know, the big part, Warren County is five hundred and thirty-two square miles. Bowling Green is forty, forty-one square miles. And just a lot, a lot larger population in a lot bigger area. And I think this is more representative. And I think Ben wrote in here that this would be updated with census and demographic changes over time if need be. And this, I think, is more of a modern-day version of Team Six's original agreement, unless Ben argues with me.
I think those are all fair statements. The only other thing I would add is that as city limits expand for those small cities, then also that quarter-mile boundary expands. So they will always continue to have influence in their direct, immediate vicinity.
In nineteen sixty, Bowling Green was roughly seven square miles. And now we're forty-plus, so things change.
Yeah, I would agree. Did we have a consensus at the city commission retreat for this to be placed on the agenda? Jeff or Ashley that?
We were close, I think. And then, like Ben mentioned, this was tweaked and we hadn't had a chance to go back. We sent this out several weeks ago for you guys to review and we never heard anything back on it. So we assumed everything would be acceptable to bring this to you.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Dana, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in the map, I'm looking at Plum Springs and the fact that City Annex is sort of around there, is that one still the Plum Springs representative in four county? Or in that case, since Bowling Green is the one impacted, is it one vote Plum Springs and four city? Or two, Bowling Green to Warren County?
So looking at that map, you see the city limits of Plum Springs and city limits of Bowling Green. Obviously, they cannot overlap, so those would never vote there. In that expanded area, which is shown in orange, that would still just be the Plum Springs representative and the four county. At no point will Bowling Green overlap with Plum Springs.
Well, I guess, I mean, in terms of who the other four votes are, with how close it is to Bowling Green's limits, I'm just wondering about, in terms of if we're trying to get the folks who are most impacted to be the ones voting, it seems like Bowling Green representatives would make sense with Bowling Green. But maybe I'm totally misreading the map or misunderstanding that area.
I'm not maybe quite understanding what you're asking, but if you're within Plum Springs city limits or that expanded area, it would be the four Warren County appointees and the one Plum Springs appointee for a total of five. If you're in the city limits of Bowling Green or in the rest of Warren County, then it would be the four Warren County appointees and the four city of Bowling Green appointees. And that's how it's currently written.
Right, and my just, I totally understand that. So my question was why, in this case, I understand why Oakland would be the Oakland person in the four county and Smith Grove, because those are way outside of Bowling Green. So my question is, in this option, when Plum Springs is so close to Bowling Green, was there discussion about who the four should be? And does it make sense for that to be Warren County to be the other four? Or Bowling Green appointed to be the other four? Or a mix of two and two? So is that discussed at all or why were the four chosen?
Yeah, I see what you're asking. So part of it is out of, one, out of simplicity and being able to explain things. It's easy, if you're in here, you vote this. If you're here, you vote this. And it makes it much easier administratively. Just the simple process of zone changes or having meetings, it makes it much more difficult from the standpoint of, okay, for this item, it's you two, you two, and you four. And then for this item, it's just one and four. And then for this item, so that was the reason for the simplification of you're either in or you're out. Could you add one? Yes, how would you write that? I'm not sure. And then how would we figure out who comes to the meeting, who doesn't? Who sets out for certain votes and who doesn't? That was part of that consideration and the makeup when this was written.
Thank you. Do you feel like, in practice, the way that it's being recommended to have all these different scenarios for the different votes, that that's going to be administratively cumbersome? Or do you feel like there's a good balance here for the benefit of it? I think, going back to Slim's point, if this is solving a problem that's real and improving things, but I think making it more cumbersome and harder and figuring out who's gonna vote for this and not for that?
Yeah, I think as proposed, I think this is the best balance of both of those, I guess, sentiments. So you have a voting makeup that is reflective of the population and funding, as the city manager explained. But you also still plan together as a community and everybody votes for everything. And I think that certainly meets the intent of the planning framework provided by the state. And it's up to each community to decide how that voting makeup, how this fits within that framework. So given the task that we were given, we feel like this is the best proposal that accomplishes those goals of continuing to plan together as a community, but changing to, for example, zone changes, keeping those to the communities and the areas in which they represent based on that population and funding mix.
So if we try this, everybody approves it and we move forward and we find that it is very confusing and cumbersome and has made this incredibly complicated, what happens next?
We continue on with it until it's changed. I mean...
Well, I mean, do we know, are there other communities who do this? Is this, you know, a common practice, a sort of split votes like this? Or is this kind of unusual to divide it this way?
Yeah, so I won't say this is common, but I won't say it's unusual. The other communities, Northern Kentucky, for example, can get very complicated. They actually have subcommittees from each community that then advises a greater planning commission board. But they have double the review times for development that we currently have. And I don't believe this community wants to do that. Go from a sixty to a ninety day is our current time. They have a hundred and twenty day or longer reviews. So there's models that are similar to this, but not exactly like this. So somewhat innovative in that regard. The other typical model is, say, Hardin County and Elizabeth Town. They all have separate boards. They do everything separately. So Hardin County has a planning commission. E-Town has a planning commission. Radcliffe has a planning commission. And they all have their own staffs and their own different development codes. One of the huge, in my opinion, advantages for Warren County is having this joint planning commission where we have a joint development code. So no matter where you develop, either it's anywhere in Warren County, you can go to one place and get all the answers you need. Well, not all of them, but all the planning and zoning answers that you need for development. So I think it's very important to keep that perspective and do the best we can to continue to build on the successes we've had in this county. And I feel like this proposal still accomplishes all of those things and builds on those successes. It's just it'll be a little bit different voting mix when it comes to zone changes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you to Ben and his staff and for everybody to get this. I think you got it right and it does make it much more equitable, not just for the small cities, but for Bowling Green, Warren County. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Did I miss anybody? Okay, I'll call a roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash? Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That's the first reading. The second binding vote will be at the next meeting on the fifteenth. Next item is ordinance BG twenty twenty forty-one, ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing one point three six eight six acres from RM two, family residential to general business and general business to planned unit development located at zero, ten twenty-four, ten twenty-eight, ten thirty-two, and ten thirty-eight Kenton Street and ten twenty-three, ten twenty-seven, ten thirty-one, and ten thirty-three Greenwood Alley, presently owned by CSR BG Investments LLC. Chris Robertson with Bellevue Properties LLC. Kara Desmond-Bell is the applicant motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon. This is a first reading of a recommendation from a unanimous vote from the planning commission. If there are any comments or questions? Actually, I think Mr. Ben was involved in the first iteration of that, but not this one, right? Does he have any comments or questions? Be happy to take them now. Dana?
I just want to say how wonderful it is. I watched the planning and zoning meeting and the neighborhood and how excited they are about this project and preserving the Kenton Street historical neighborhood and just seeing all the families that have grown up on that block and how those homes are gonna be preserved and renovated and all the wonderful stories of families and kids who are gonna grow up in the future of that court. It's really exciting. So I'm thankful and excited for our community and the future for that neighborhood.
Anything else? I'll call a roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
I'll abstain from voting on this, Your Honor.
For the same reasons. For the same reasons as the last time, I understand. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That's the first reading. Second binding vote will be at the next meeting. Next is first reading of ordinance BG 2020-42. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 296.41 acres from agriculture to heavy industrial located at zero Frig Madison Road and 1188 Missport Road, presently owned by the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated. Karen Ron Bunch. Uh, this is a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for the ITA. Uh, are there any comments or questions that you need to give us any information, Mr. Bunch? Okay. Any comments or questions? I'll, I'll call a roll. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Ashley, did I note that, uh, I moved it in Sue's second, did it? I didn't remember saying that, but if it didn't, that's what the intent was. Got you. Okay. That's the first and second vote will be, uh, binding vote will be at our next meeting. Next is municipal order 2020-191. Municipal order approving agreement for realignment of Highland Way, first phase between City of Bowling Green and San Potter Jr. and further authorizing all the necessary actions or all actions necessary for construction completion of realigned connection to Nashville Road. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
Okay, I'm going to take, uh, give you a hundred thousand foot view of this. And I'm going to let, uh, Greg fly in a little bit lower i- if need be. Uh, this is a project that the state's been working on for many years. Nashville Road and aligning Highland Way with Emmett Drive. And so, uh, as I said, as, as far back as 10 years ago, this was listed as the number one priority, as Greg mentioned in the memo. Uh, and ever since we've gotten the roundabout in place there by WKU, uh, the need grows even more for that road to be widened and improved. So, uh, it's planned to be five lanes from Campbell Lane to University Boulevard. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet is in final stages of, of the design on this road, including the realignment of Highland Way with Emmett Avenue and placing a traffic signal there. Uh, this will, of course, help with those, uh, trying to make left turns off Emmett and left turns off of Highland. Currently, it's, it's hard to do, especially during certain times of the day. A series of meetings were held with, uh, KYTC and staff. And there was a developer to come to the table, uh, uh, that was interested in doing a development at the corner of Highland Way. And they are offering to do their development and allow the city to partner with them, uh, for only a hundred thousand dollars to get the Highland Way connection done, uh, which would be probably a lot, lot more expensive than that if we were to take it on ourselves. So, uh, KYTC will design, uh, purchase the right of ways, complete the final connection to the existing Highland Way and, and take on the second phase. And that's all in this agreement that's before you tonight. Uh, paragraphs five, six, and seven talk about the hundred thousand dollar deal. Uh, the developer is offering for the city to pay. And, uh, that's kind of the highlights of this thing. And I'll give it over to Greg and even Hillary. Hillary's worked on this too. Uh, Greg, you want to have anything to add on this?
No, Jeff, I think you covered it very well.
There is, uh, picture of the, the proposed development in your packets. Uh, that's proposed with the realignment of Highland that they're interested in doing. And we make no promises, uh, in our agreement with the developer uh, as to rezoning or anything like that. Hillary, you may have to help me out where that is in the agreement, but I think it's in section two on page two.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to say thank you.
Go ahead, Sid, I'm sorry.
I want to say thank you. This, I live on Highland. Uh, I've worked at, at, at South Campus for 12, 14 years. To take a left from Highland onto Nashville Road is brutal. And there's a wreck. I don't know, we'd have to get the, but there's a lot of accidents and, and a lot of them because the cars go so fast that it's, uh, I, I'm so excited about this project just from, you know, that, that it's being done before the Menards because we're going to get a lot more traffic on Highland and it's a cut through and it's dangerous. So thank you all very much for working together and making this, uh, that, that, this will be a huge help.
Slim, did you have your hand up?
I did. Uh, it, it appears that the development, uh, of the land just based upon these drawings, and there, there, there may be more details elsewhere, that they are both maybe apartment complexes and then, uh, commercial fronting Nashville Road. Is all of that part of the project and approved?
Not tonight. That they would have to go to planning and zoning for public input and all that sort of thing. This is just to realign the road.
Understand. And then my second question is, uh, about sidewalks. And, uh, Greg's still there. And so my question is, uh, Greg, what, what impact will this have? And will it move Highland Way up the list for sidewalks? Yeah, great question. Um, when we, when we choose sidewalks for prioritization in a case like this, we wouldn't necessarily count that as a factor. Um, however, the KYTC with their project, uh, is adding a multi-use path along Nashville Road with, uh, with their widening. As a part of that, uh, where the existing Highland Way is now, where it intersects with Nashville Road, that could become, um, either a room for a sidewalk, was it, it's existing right of way, or a multi-use path. So, um, it very well could move Highland up. Or since there's, since there ultimately will be a greenway on either side of Highland Way, one on Nashville Road and one on existing small house, there would be a multi-use path gap that would be created by those two projects. So there's a chance that, that we could construct a greenway, uh, in between those two routes. The, the two questions that I get about all of this development in this area, and one of them we're not voting on tonight is about the zoning changes and the, and, and the type of development that's going on in there. But, but a much longer, uh, request or concern that I've had, that's been shared with me about Highland Way, is just the lack of sidewalks. We now are identifying it, if we, if we hadn't identified it before, we are now identifying it as, uh, a major cut through area that, that is potentially dangerous. Uh, I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead and push for sidewalks for those that don't have the luxury or who choose not to drive a car so that they can also be safe as they're traveling the same path that cars are. Absolutely. I think that's a big influencing factor, uh, Slim, in what you just said. So that will definitely go into, into the perception and the, and the selection. Very much like, uh, you know, we've talked over the years about Riverwood and how that's a connection and how it's a cut through, um, you know, for traffic to get to Kroger and the Cemetery Road. This falls under that same category. So I think, again, it doesn't necessarily have a factor in the selection process. But if there's a, you know, if there's a, uh, you know, a tie between two roadways, one that has significant, you know, connection possibilities where it's extended to a major, uh, Menards on one end and, and encourages more traffic, certainly pushes it up the list in terms of the functionality and the classification of the roadway itself. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Meredith. So the timeline, I know in the project that we have with the picture, there's the first phase and the second phase. So can you talk a little bit about phases and where we are in terms of, uh, I guess, how many years down the road we think all this will happen? And then what does that mean for our timeline for our second phase? Because the road is not going to be built to connect to Highland Way all at the same time, if I'm correct.
Right, right. And so, you know, the second phase is very much tied to what the state does, KYTC does on the widening plans for US 31W because those are, you know, inextricably tied together in that they're, they'll be done at the same time. So when the state makes their improvements on 31W, then that second phase of Highland Way connection should be done.
And the, let's see, on page three of the agreement, paragraph seven, it says in the second sentence, "The city shall cooperate with, um, I guess, the owner, developer, and any third party engaged by them in all manner reasonably necessary to develop the subject property, including the entrance street." Um, and so, and since it's saying including the entrance street, I assume that that means that we are agreeing to cooperate with them on the full development. And so if someone could just, um, maybe explain that paragraph to me and to what exactly we're agreeing to there or the, beyond the street.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, and just from the public work side, Hillary may want to comment in, in terms of the verbiage itself, but it's, it's cooperate in terms of, um, you know, putting the plans together, making sure that it's reviewed uh, from the city perspective in terms of meeting, you know, minimum specifications uh, and, and criteria that the city bases all their public development roadways on. So we need to, i- it's to, to make sure that we cooperate in moving that process forward from our review and our approval standpoint is the way I look at that.
So it's not, uh, saying we will fast track all development and cooperate them however they want to develop that property. We are agreeing to, um, cooperate with them to make that happen.
It's, it's not saying that. And, and as Jeff pointed out in paragraph two on page two, we are not agreeing to anything regarding zoning or what sort of development they're able to put there. Just that we, oh, as far as permitting, um, the entrance street plans, we will do our part in a reasonable timeframe. As far as zoning, they're very clear that they're on their own. Um, our, what we're doing is this entrance street so that the state can connect to it. What happens around it, we have an interest in for the public as far as making sure it's all done safely. But as far as the development, we don't, we're not involved in that and we have not agreed to anything regarding zoning and cannot. That has to take its normal process and, and I don't know when or how that will turn out.
So let's say, um, for whatever reason, either this developer decides to, um, you know, choose something else with the property and not the specific development plan, or it doesn't make it through the planning and zoning process, what happens to this agreement?
It, it's still in place. We will still do our part with the entrance road, which we have an interest in reviewing the plans and, and working with the developer on. And then the state will still connect to it. What happens as far as the development itself doesn't affect this agreement.
So, okay, because I think it's just confusing because the map includes all of their planned development. So it makes it, I just want to make sure I understand what we are, what this specific decision is on is just the road itself. Nothing to do with whether or not anything is developed in a certain way.
Well, we are not agreeing to any specific type of development. That will leave the planning and zoning and then come back before you all if it needs to be. And it has nothing to do with this agreement. It is simply the entrance street across from Emmett that will at some point connect to Highland when the state completes the second phase for safety purposes and so that we have some participation in how that road is built. Technically, if they went to planning and zoning and got something approved, they could do it a different way. So this way the city has input in where and how it connects. But that's our only participation. We are not involved in the development at all.
Are there any other comments or questions? I'll call roll. Beasley Brown.
Yeah.
Denning. I missed you, Joe.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is first reading, uh, ordinance BG 2020-43. Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. Ash, Ashley, do you have microphone access?
Yes.
Can you do this one, please?
And. Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2021A and taxable general obligation bond, Series 2021B, an aggregate maximum principal amount of $40 million and $6,500,000 respectfully for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition of the, of a leasehold estate in the real properties and improvements constituting the transpark expansion project. Authorizing a second supplemental contract, lease and option with the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated and the County of Warren, Kentucky with respect to the transpark expansion project. Approving forms of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Thank you. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel, do you want to take us through this?
Sir, uh, so we have been asked by the ITA, uh, to issue general obligation bonds for the expansion of the transpark. Back in, uh, back in 2007, we were approached, uh, for issuing roughly $25 million of, of GO bonds to help develop, further develop the transpark. And today, uh, we can say that it's, it's been a successful venture with, with us and the county and the ITA. We have 12 manufacturing facilities up there, three educational facilities. And there's roughly 2,700 jobs in the transpark over roughly 900 acres. Uh, those 2,700 jobs support another 4,323 jobs in the area. Oh, and they produce, uh, millions of dollars in taxes. So, uh, with the announcements, recent announcements of Crown Core Conceal, Nova Steel, uh, the Dollar General project of the, uh, fresh distribution, we are coming to a point, uh, as mentioned in, in the memo from Mr. Bunch, hopefully you got a copy of that, that, uh, we are reaching, uh, capacity in the transpark. And so the, uh, ITA recently bought almost 300 acres of, of farmland up there, uh, up 68. And we now have the opportunity to develop roughly close to 500 acres, 400 and 482 to be exact. Uh, but we, we have the land, the ITA has the land, but we do not have the infrastructure in place to get to the land. We do not have, have the utilities, anything like that. So the ITA is asking us to partner with them again, uh, to help with infrastructure of the, what we call the expanded transpark or transpark two. Um, the county is willing to go, uh, 50/50 with us again on debt service of this, uh, expanded park. The ITA has pledged to give us all of the wage tax produced in the expanded area of the park to go towards debt service. Uh, they have also pledged any land sales to go back to, uh, to cover debt service. And so, uh, we have put together, uh, this bond ordinance. Uh, we're looking at a tax exempt piece and a taxable piece. The taxable piece covers, uh, reimbursement of the land acquisition that the ITA has already paid for to get them back, uh, whole and to get them sustainable for the next 10 to 15 years, uh, while the city and the county can, uh, can use the wage tax generated in the transpark for debt service coverage. So with that being said, I'll give it over to Katie or Ron, uh, whoever wants to, to give additional information, uh, from what I missed on this. Ron, you want to speak?
Katie, did you have anything? Yeah, Meredith said I wasn't allowed to talk, so that's why we have Ben's on. She said I have class to give, but you just beyond looked good. I was like, I'll try to do that. I, I, I really just wanted to thank you all, the mayor, city commission, county, and your, your- and your professional wonderful staff, honestly. It's that team atmosphere among the different parties that position us to have product to be competitive. And Jeff mentioned some of the projects, but just to put that in context a bit, Christian who stood behind me, he does our real estate work, has, he also does a research work. And he looked and even though we're battling COVID and going through all that this year, we currently have three of the top 10 projects in Kentucky, and they're all in the transpark. And we have another project that we're looking pretty good on that would be twice the size of the number one project in Kentucky right now. And it would be in this transpark expansion that we're talking about now. So Crown kicks off this new expanded area. And so I just really want to express my deepest appreciation for all the support professionalism and the business climate that you create so that we can help companies expand and recruit companies here. And I really applaud you for having the vision to continue to invest in that. So I don't know if Gaines you want to add anything or provide any disclaimers for what I said?
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Great. No, I think Jeff did a wonderful job laying the foundation for what this, this project is about. And Ron put the business sense to it. So that's, I don't have anything else to add, but I can try to answer any of the legal questions on behalf of the ITA.
Mayor, I'd like to say one.
Sue, go ahead.
Yeah. Hey, I want to echo a lot about what Ron said. Jeff and I serve on this board, so we meet quite often. And the prospects that Ron brings to us, while he can't give us names and actual companies, but he calls it a funnel and the funnel is full. And he's always looking for more. So from the ITA board member, it's just such a pleasure because ultimately, ultimately, yes, new companies, expanded companies, this brings jobs to the community. This is about jobs. This is about families having a better opportunity for their future and choosing a path of participating in the economy to their fullest extent. So for that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joe, did you have a question?
Just a comment to Ron. I've been fortunate enough to go all the way back to Harold Huffman as the director of the Chamber of Commerce. And Ron Bunch has been, in my opinion, the go-getter that we have and have had at Bowling Green, Warren County Chamber of Commerce. He is not hesitant to go out and knock on the doors. And in my opinion, he has sold Bowling Green and Warren County a lot better than some of us who have lived here all our lives could do. He is a class gentleman in every respect. He is my friend and has been ever since he's been in Bowling Green. And I have all the respect in the world for him. His sidekick down there, Meredith, you know, Meredith is a money person. And whatever Meredith says, you better listen to her. She too has done a tremendous job. And I am sure I will see both of them on the next agenda, which will be my last agenda. Thank God. But I look forward to it.
Thank you so much, sir.
Dana, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to just express my thanks to everybody continuing to be working on economic development in our entire community. I know it's a team effort with so many folks led by our chamber. So thank you, Ron and Meredith and your whole team who make this position that we're in possible with all your hard work to recruit these amazing projects. And am I reading that number correctly, that it's $7 billion, almost $8 billion economic impact over the next 10 years?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's incredible. And the fact that we're going to be able to open up this additional land to continue to make those positive economic impacts on our community is just amazing. And we're so grateful to have you, to have all of you working so hard on behalf of our city and its future and making such a big impact, bringing good jobs for our families. And I just had a few questions. Katie, would you mind just going over the details of the bonding and what fund that's going to come out of in terms of repaying that bond back?
Sure. Our plan is to utilize our job development incentive fund to pay the city's portion of the debt. And of course, as the city manager mentioned, a portion of the wage assessment would be remitted back also to go toward the debt and any land sales. So it is not anticipated to impact our general fund for this new bond issue.
And then Hillary, the language that you sent earlier today?
Actually, Dana, that's actually in the next one.
I'll wait.
That's all right. In this, in this one, what I sent were the legal descriptions. We did not have all of those until this morning. They go with the lease. So that was the only amendment on this one, I think. And I'm not sure which version you have. On page six, on the fourth line down, there was one change. It actually had listed US Bank as the paying agent, and we don't know who that is yet. So we changed that to a general generic. But other than that, there were no changes to this. So the language changes in the next ordinance.
And to respond back to the other part of your question, Commissioner Beasley Brown, the bond sale would probably take place after the first of the year. So once we get through the first and second reading for this bond ordinance, and if it's approved by the city, approved by fiscal court, also needs to be approved by the ITA, the agreement that's attached, the sublease, and then making sure that all the parties are on the same page. We would do the bond sale probably after the first of the year. We would watch the market and our financial advisors would help advise to make sure that we go out at the right time. Obviously, had we been able to get this done back in the later part of the summer, August would have been spectacular timeframe for interest rates. But we missed that mark. And since we're going into the holiday season, we felt like it might be better to just see how the markets evolve and just try to do the actual sale of the bonds after the first of the year, but to get through all of this paperwork first.
A bond issue, about a 30 to 60 day process. It's a lengthy process and there's a lot of work that goes into it. And so if you, once you get to mid-December and you get into the holidays, the two weeks, last two weeks of December are not, not a good time to go out and sell bonds. So nobody's paying attention, attention. And so we're going to have to probably push this off to the, probably the first week or so of January, unless hope and pray that the rates hold steady because the rates are still really good right now. We're still looking at something in the low twos. We're still hoping. So I'd like to thank Hillary and Katie. They worked some, some late hours trying to get this together, to get this on the agenda. And I appreciate their work on this along with Raymond James. We've got a new bond counsel with us now, Laura Thielman, and she's done a lot of good work for us already. So, and also want to thank, since I'm thanking everybody, I want to thank Ron and Meredith and their team for their pledge to allow us to take the wage tax this time and apply that towards the debt service. That really helps us and the county toward covering these bonds in the next 20 years. And we have a lot of faith in them and producing these jobs that's on the way. And we feel really good about the revenue projections that are going to come from those wage taxes and those jobs that are coming to the transpark and this new territory. So I really think that'll help us quite a bit in regard to covering the debt service and really lightening the load on the county and the city as far as debt service coverage. So thanks to Ron and Meredith for agreeing to do that. And I'll shut up now.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Second binding vote will be at the next meeting. Next is ordinance BG 202044, the first reading of this ordinance for approving amendment to the amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement related to the intermodal commerce and distribution center and industrial park Kentucky transpark. Ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement among the city of Bowling Green, Warren County and the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated and the Southern Kentucky Regional Development Authority related to the development promotion, acquisition, design, construction, operation, management, indoor financing of an expansion to the Kentucky transpark. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
This is basically the rules of the game between us, the county and the ITA on how we're going to proceed with this financial endeavor. It's very similar to what we had in 2007. I think Hillary and Laura picked up that one and dusted it off and updated it for the 21 issue along with Katie. And I'll turn this over to Hillary and Katie to answer any detailed questions. I have looked it over and it looks very familiar as to what we did back in 2007 when we did the first issue of the GO bonds for the transpark. So there's also a map in the back of it. Again, I don't, I failed to mention that earlier, but all of the green on the map is the new land that we are proposing to put infrastructure in and develop. And there's a piece behind the BG metal forming along the railroad tracks that we, that they already had. And then the new piece that I mentioned earlier that kind of goes up 68. So that comprises the 482 acres.
Any comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. If someone could just go through some of the just high level details of the agreement, how this works between all three entities, just for the public's benefit, that would be great.
Hillary, you want that one?
Sure, I can do that. It basically dispels out the county's part, our part, who's responsible. And it's a little bit complicated if you read it because some of it still deals with the 2016 bond issue. And then some of it is just related to this bond issue. But it spells out when the county starts their payments, what areas are covered, each development area that is covered, and how those proceeds will be divided between the county and city, and what portion, when those development areas expire. It basically just covers our agreement with both the ITA and the county. As far as your question earlier, we did change on page five, the definition of project site. And that was Gaines' contribution. When we got this agreement finally ready last Wednesday, I sent it to the county and to the ITA. And Gaines reviewed it and felt like we needed to clarify project site as it listed it to set Exhibit A. So we added additional language so that it's clear that any property that's already been conveyed away by the ITA is not covered by this agreement so that those people have clear title as the ITA doesn't own it anymore. And we also added a list in addition to the maps so that it's clear what property is still owned by the ITA and is covered by our agreement here. So Gaines, I don't know if you have anything to add or Katie, if you have anything to add, but basically is similar to our last agreement, but adds the new additional agreement that we have regarding the newest development areas and any future development areas that the ITA may establish.
Okay. Katie, can you distinguish and clarify the 2007 bonds versus the 2016 bonds and so on?
I'll do my best. So the original 2007 bonds were refinanced, a portion of that was refunded, and that's the 2016 bonds. So they actually relate to one another. And they were established basically to do the infrastructure that was for the original transpark site. And it was to pay back some other mortgage-backed bonds from back in the day as well. But, but in all, that's what that GO, the 2007 general obligation bond from the city and then the 2016, they all relate together, those two do. So the 2007 is already paid. The 2016 is what remains currently, and that'll be paid off in September of 2024. And then the 2021 bonds are for all of the expansion area. And in the maps that are attached, it's the second map, and it's outlined in red what the expansion area pertains to. So it's that 400 and some acres that was discussed earlier. But that is all of what the 2021 bonds would be utilized for the infrastructure development in those two parcel areas, those larger areas there in the transpark. And it would be a 20-year bond. And so 2021 would be paid off sometime in 2041. And so that's the time period that we're looking at.
Follow-up question. So this new sort of more defined area that this new agreement refers to, to the land that the ITA doesn't own anymore or does own, what's the, I guess, does that impact the wage assessment? How many years that will, it will be wage assessed? And is it, I guess, can you point to me which projects is affected by this more defined definition of who this applies to an Exhibit A?
There-
Go ahead, Katie.
I was just going to say, there are currently six development areas that were established by Warren County. And that's what the one and a half percent wage assessment applies to. And so Bowling Green Metal Forming would be development area one. So the first map in the attachment A outlines and identifies each of the current development areas. So development area one, which is primarily Bowling Green Metal Forming, but there's a couple other businesses there, that wage assessment ends in 2024. And then the same thing for development area two, which has Constellium, Canon, several other areas is in development area two, and that wage assessment ends in 2024. Development area three has had no development. So that particular development area will be reestablished by the county as part of this expansion area. And so it'll get a new time period established with it. Development area four is in it, trying to see who else located there. We've got Northstar, Alpla, the new Dollar General, DG Fresh, and I think Nova Steel, is that correct, Ron? Those are all in development area four. And development area four ends in 2026. So it goes two years beyond our 2016 bond issue. And then development area five, which is primarily Bilstein or Bilstein, I apologize for pronouncing that incorrectly, that goes till 2033. And then development area six is where Crown Core Conceal is. And that development was already established and it goes till 2038. So those were established by county ordinance. They have defined 20-year time periods. The city collects that one and a half wage assessment, 100% of it, and remits it to the county currently, and the county remits that to the ITA. But going forward with the new 2021 bonds, any of those development areas that go beyond 2024 will still be handled in this same way, except that it won't go to the ITA. It will be shared between the city and the county to go toward the debt. So the county will need to reestablish a new development area for this new expansion property that was just part of the rezoning tonight. And that date has not yet been established, but it would be for a 20-year time period.
It would be development-
Right. And Dana, changing that definition doesn't change any of the development areas or any of the times that they actually expire. It just makes it clear for our interest in this property, if something were to go wrong in this agreement. That we cannot then go back on any property not owned by the ITA. But it doesn't change anything about the percentages or how long they're still development areas, how long they pay those wages, that, that is not affected.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call a roll. Beasley Brown.
I'll send.
Yeah.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Second reading will be on, second binding reading will be at our next meeting. Next is the second reading of ordinance BG 202037. Or, uh, ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing a total of approximately 6.604 acres of property located at zero Morgantown Road with property presently owned. Law and Order Holdings LLC with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. This is the second reading. We discussed lifetime, last time with the voluntary annexation. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown. Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson. Next is the second reading of ordinance BG 202038 is amended. Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter 15 business and general regulations of the city of Bowling Green code of ordinances related to administrative changes and immobilization devices and private parking lots. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. This is the second reading of, uh, item we discussed thoroughly at the last meeting. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call a roll. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning. Nash.
Yes.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That's the second, that's the final reading. So it will go into effect and publication on Friday. Uh, I had no list of, uh, public comments being signed in. So that will be the end of our meeting and our next scheduled meeting is at 4:30 on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. Thanks for tuning in.